All right, good evening. Today is Tuesday, October 4th. We're here for a regular scheduled school board meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order at 7:00. First item up is the Pledge of Allegiance Dan. The flag is in the front, just like in the back room.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to verify that the United States of America is a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own, with every justice for all.
We have six board members tonight, and it is absent. And I just want to note, we did not have an executive session tonight. It was a committee meeting beforehand that we will get to when we go to committee updates, which is later in the evening. So first item up is opportunity for public comment. The board encourages public expression at board meetings. Speakers may comment on matters related to agenda items. The board will not permit in public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should send their comments or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Personal attacks, obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial or religious or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Total time allocated for public comments, 30 minutes, with the option to extend. There's a 3-5 minute allotment per speaker. After a comment period at the beginning of regular meetings, a second period at the end, but generally, we do not receive comments during special board meetings. We do ask you to identify yourself by name and address prior to speaking. So if anybody would like to speak for public comment, the floor is all yours. Going once, going twice. Okay, no one for a public comment. Maybe you'll change your mind at the end. Next item on the agenda is a special presentation about our 2021 Capitol Project by Asher McGraw. So the floor is yours.
Just give them an introduction. So obviously, if anyone has seen campus lately, there's been a lot of construction going on over the past few years, pretty much since COVID. We've got different updates, reports. In 2017, the community was generous enough to vote in favor for a $36.50 project, and then again, voted for a $21.50 project in 2020. So with that first project coming to an end, and then the other one kind of starting to ramp up, I thought it was a good idea to bring Asher McGraw Architects and Turner Construction in to give a brief update of how it went, what's going on now, where the closeout looks like, and then kind of schedule for the next project coming up. So from Asher McGraw, we have Krista Hanniger, Lauren Locke, Ben Darby, and then from Turner Construction, we have Chris Gray and Vincent Dnaski. So without further ado, we take you away.
All right, thank you for having us. We are going to be going over the Capitol Project Schedule. Chris Gray and Vincent Dnaski will be going over that. And then we'll recap the project meeting plan. And then, please, just let me go forward.
All right, so getting up down schedules, there's been a lot of activity this summer wrapping up the previous project. And currently, we're in closeout mode. All the work is substantially complete across the campus. Asher McGraw is finalizing punch lists on work that was just completed this summer, and then pushing the contractors to get that punch list completed as quickly as possible. Working on the school schedules now, and looking to have the financials close out by the end of the year, so district can get their aid rolling in the coming year. Then for the 2324 Capitol Project, looking at two phases. There's a Phase 2 for the track, and part of that has to do with the state aid window and when that replenishes. So that's pushed off. So Phase 1 is all the buildings, and we have SEB approval now, so we're looking to get ready to go out to bid. And the timeline right now is going out to bid in, we're preparing the audits right now, looking to bid in November through January. So bid and award period. Probably open the bids in December. That gives time to review, scope reviews, and make recommendations to the Board of Education for approval. And by the time you approve it, award contracts, it'll be January. And then going into the submittals and getting materials in time for summer, and looking to start work as early as possible in the springtime according with the school schedules. And then Phase 2 is pushed back another year, so submitting in August of '23. Again, that has to do with the aid replenishing. And bid and award January through March of '24. So currently, SEB timeline, we're at about six months for approval. Does that sound right?
A little bit less than that, I think.
So this is based on the current SEB timelines. That's been fluctuating. And then April through December of '24 is mainly the track, field, and then some electrical components in the buildings. So it's middle construction that closed out, and both projects closing out by the end of that year to get the aid rolling for projects.
So I thought we could jump right into Project 2021. What we did is, bids came in so well for the project that we actually had four phases. We started out with Phase 1 and 2. We knew that was happening. We got good bids, and then we had Phases 3 and 4. So we'll give some edits of that. We came into your district and were introduced to Waterman Elementary. And of course, okay, we were introduced to Waterman Elementary, and the crawl space was a bit of a pond. And because it was a moist environment, we saw some structure that was missing and corroded. We got, we were crawling our hands and knees and discovered lots of fun things. So what we did is, we got some experts in the field, and we figured out why there was water coming in the building. We had, we quickly went to the state in advance of the first Phase 2, and we were able to, you can see here, this is a current slide, a current image of the crawl space at Waterman. So we gathered water out, the system that we're using to drains working well, and we replaced the structure. So that was a very good successive project. And then Phase 2 was the bulk of what you were seeing finishing up. We had some window projects. We took out the windows at the high school and middle school, many of them, and Waterman replaced them. They were beyond useful life, they were single pane, and it created a nice campus look. And to Turner's credit, they ordered, they had the contractors order the windows well in advance, and so we actually had windows when other people didn't. That's a picture of Waterman before and after. And now we're going to go inside Waterman and the auditorium.
So the existing auditorium before had great columns and charm, but it just needed a few modern updates to break into the 21st century. So the renovation included updated lighting, both in the house and theatrical, and included seating repairs and ADA seating. It also included heating and cooling. And one of the best things is now you can see students' faces when they're on stage through the app at lighting levels. And similarly, we also renovated the high school auditorium. So again, the theatrical department at St. Elias is amazing, but the space wasn't doing anyone any favors, especially the acoustics and the technology. So in the upgrades, we updated the lighting, we changed the seating out to new seating with ADA seating, again, new heating and cooling. There's a digital acoustic sound system, as well as new projectors and screens. And the theatrical department has been blowing us away with how they've been using the space, and they say that the acoustics have been really good.
So we are moving on to your middle school gym. You may remember what used to look like. It's a little bit different now. Your existing gym didn't meet the needs. You didn't know a place to have all of your games. It was a little small, home of the kids did. I'm sure you can remember. And now, what we did is, we introduced a lot of natural light. You can now have games as your light and have spectators. We have a stage where you can have the entire middle school in the seating. So it really creates this really nice environment. So we're really happy about the space. And then if you walk down the hallway on the lower level of the middle school, we'll give you a little walkthrough. So this is the wrestling room, and it used to be one big wrestling area, and we divided it, so you could still have wrestling practice there. But now you can also have yoga, and you can have drama practice. And the fun thing about this floor that we have here is it's the same size as the high school stage. So practice in this area for drama is very realistic to what you have on the stage. And then as we go further down the hallway, we come to the middle school class.
So the existing space, it was really hard for Kami, the teacher, to supervise the kids while they were cooking with the kitchen equipment, especially the hot stoves and everything. So in the next slide, you'll see the renovated space, which the kitchen areas now have low walls, so it's very easy to supervise all of the kids in their different groups cooking. And there's nice dedicated zones for sewing, for the laundry, and then for your general classroom space, as well as a demonstration table with a video screen. And then across the hallway from the facts is what we call the middle school third space. So before, this was a corridor of unutilized offices, and we changed it into this third space, which is a breakout classroom for the middle school students, so they can come here, have a variety of seating. There's a presenter area, as well as some interactive projector screens. And then moving again further down the corridor, you come to the lower commons here. The previous space here was an existing ticketing booth that wasn't large enough to function well. So what we did was, we bumped out the space into the unutilized corridor. We wrapped the concession stands with old middle school gym floor that was demolished and reused, and then we infilled it with some modern kitchen appliances for the concession And then going upstairs to the upper commons, so before, I think we could all remember, this was a really dark space, unutilized, giant corridor. So what we really wanted to do was provide new life and functionality to this space by adding furniture, removing that old fishbowl, and providing outlets and task lighting. And this seems very popular with the high school students. And then going down the stairs and out the door, we come to the new press box. So before, I don't know if you remember, your press box was the cart on the top right. We provided now a dedicated space for the press box function, and it includes rooftop access for video games.
And then as you look out of the press box, you look down to the iron stand. We did remove the existing concrete that was there, reformed that, so it's safer, easier to maintain the area. And then we provided some new scoreboard on your campus. Some other site work that we did is we replaced some of the asphalt that was deteriorating. We looked at the stormwater systems. We were able to get water out of your campus better, so that you don't have to pull the town and village. And then we did some of the seating for the soccer field as well, renovating that. And then we looked at safety sidewalks, and so we renovated some of your sidewalks that were beyond repair, and leveling out some of the sidewalk asphalt, so that you're stepping here, not stepping a foot away. And this is one of my favorites. This was Phase 3, because we actually had money to work with, and so we worked with the district and identified the Waterman boiler really needed to have worked on. And what I like about this slide is it shows the large boilers that were there in construction type, and how different it is in today's world. So a little excitement over here. And then, so that project, Phase 3, went splendidly, hardly any change orders. It was wonderful. Phase 4, we had a bump in the road, and so Ben is going to talk about that. And Phase 4 was transportation facility and some high school.
Yeah, so we were able to add this to the 2021 project. This is the commons canopy exterior, and there was water infiltration issues with it. Water was getting down below and rusting out the steel in the deck pillow. So we were able to repair the steel, replace the CMU, and actually add a new railing, where we dropped it down to give more visibility to the fields, and then added a waterproofing layer to solve any future water infiltration issues.
And the issue with that, the first core the contractor did wasn't up to our standards, and it wasn't up to the contractor's standards either. So really amply, we worked it out with the contractor to remove that concrete layer and have the main core. And so that might, that might be what you've seen being done in the last few weeks.
Yeah, we're very happy with that. The second part of Phase 4 was re-roofing the transportation facility. Also, this building had water issues. There was holes in the membrane that was getting in, and after a long time, we rusted out the steel deck here as well. So we were able to repair all rusted areas and then re-roof the entire screen.
And now we're going to switch gears and go to Project 2024, which we'll see in a bit, as Vince mentioned. And I won't go through the list, but what we did is, we spoke to district leadership. We met with you as well as the board and shared some ideas and thoughts that we heard about co-m dramatic spaces that we could work on, really improve education, really help what your faculty are doing here. And so we identified some areas where we could work on, and we'll show you some margins of those. And the other areas that we listed in there are things that we wanted to in your buildings to keep them maintained and keep them running in good order. So we are going to start with the greenhouse.
Yeah, this is the 2024 project, and we're excited about the greenhouse because it was an area that was previously getting water back in behind the brick and actually into the building in this area. So rather than just fixing it in kind, we took it as an opportunity to really show off this greenhouse and the biology classes that's within. So yeah, we replaced it with this blazing system that really shows it off from this gear here and gives a new space inside. The next space is the high school back. The existing area here is quite outdated. It's a time capsule from the finishes to the fixtures. So what we're doing is creating a space that is more modern, professional, and career-oriented, and it's flexible enough to expand the curriculum in the future. So we're excited about this space as well. This one is the high school tech area, and here we are creating a STEM lab. This is a more flexible teaching space with access to digital content and digital creation tools. We're also creating visibility into the space to show off this program more. It's really behind closed walls right now, and we want to create more interest in this program in the future. So that's that space. Next space is the high school gym. This is increasing the space's function as well as giving it a new look. A lot of equipment improvements here, including a divider curtain where a folding partition used to be, new scoreboards and new lectures. The design of it has loosely taken inspiration from the high school auditorium, and yeah, giving the space a lift.
The next building we'll touch on quickly is State Street Elementary. So we have the list of building elements that we want to take care of, as well as your State Street gym. Not only at high school, we're taking that magic wand and re-envisioning what happens within the envelope of this space.
Yep, very similar to high school. This is a fully renovated State Street Elementary gym. The bones are good, but it's getting a new look, as well as equipment upgrades here as well. There are new backboards going in and a divider curtain. We are taking the ceiling out, the drop ceiling, and just showing the structure, so it's more open, and then also adding new windows, or replacing windows for increased natural light.
And then this slide talks about your other buildings. A lot of it is infrastructure that we're doing. Note, at your transportation facility, your bus wash system is, it's time to get it replaced. And so this project actually is time involved, so we will be doing that. And one other element is, we are looking at handicap accessibility and life safety, and so we have new emergency lighting, and that will be hooked up at your educational buildings. And then our last slide that we have is your turf and track. We, as part of Phase 2, next summer, will submit to the state. And what we'll do is, we'll take your turf surface and replace that. We will resurface the track, and you'll have a really great facility. And so what we did as part of 2021 with a grandstand and your scoreboard is in support of the work that we're going to be doing. And we're, we're going to be working with the athletic department further and with the district leadership to finalize the design. This is close to being final, but we have some items we want to show that's just right. And so our very last slide is the thank you slide for letting us in here, and wondering what questions you may have regarding Project 2021 or 2024.
Two things I saw was athletic display and then the team rooms. Are the team rooms going to be where they are now or under in retard?
The team rooms are going to be pretty much where they are now, but instead of one bay, it's going to be two bays. So you'll have the ability to have two different groups gathered there, and then we'll have some bathroom facilities as well.
And what would the athletic display?
Right outside of the high school gym right now, you'll, it's gone through a little bit of a change, but there's a lot of elements on the walls that could use some organization. And so we're going to create some space for those elements that are organized. And then we have a display cabinet that we're going to be building, and so things will have a place.
If you all saw earlier, we had Brian Franco and some high school students that were going to do a presentation. We decided to delay that. Unfortunately, we can't do it in November, but we're going to do it in December. And I was going to ask later, the board supported and actually pulled in our December board meeting in the auditorium, so Brian and the kids can showcase the technology in the auditorium, just to experience it. It's one thing seeing it on PowerPoint, but it's another, you know.
We did hear from Brian that the sound is working so well that they don't, that he doesn't need to use the shelf anymore, so we're really hoping that.
Where's the light?
There's a shelf that goes behind the light. And so the acoustic technology, it's somewhere near the track that's carrying that function.
Anybody else have questions? I think it was. Is the emergency lighting an upgrade or an installation, are we replacing, or putting in something that doesn't currently exist?
It's a mix of both. You have some emergency light, but you don't have enough. So we're actually going to be changing out some of the light fixtures to be emergency lighting. As an example, I don't know if you've ever been in the language room of high school after hours, but I've been. I've been through there. We've been through your building all times in the other day. And so when we're there, it's very dark. When they turn off the main lighting, you have the emergency lighting, and the kids are running around with the track and whatnot. It's very dark to see in certain areas. There's a lot less lighting, emergency lighting than there should be. And really, your lights are going to stay in about the same location. It's just a matter of swapping and also reconnecting to an emergency system. So when you turn the switch off at night, those lights will remain on, and they have a battery backup.
With State Street, the exterior masonry repairs, would it be possible to tie in the white cinder blocks to the red portion of the building so it looks like it runs together in some way, shape, or form?
We would love to do that.
Well, no, she's pretty much just still doing everything. Do you know?
Okay. Awesome.
Everything can be done.
Yeah. There's a way, and I've worked on a previous project with Chris, and we did something similar, where they stay in the masonry. So even if you can tie in the red around the portion of that white part of the building just to get this like, like they belong, you know, that would be, not the whole thing, but keep, but something to tie the building.
So it's a transition, a no-go transition.
Because you look at State Street, the back, the new addition stands out like a sore thumb compared to the 1950 school. If there's any way we can tie that in to either with some type of staining on the masonry to tie, not the whole thing, but just to make it blend together would be a little bit nicer.
I appreciate that comment, and that's one of the reasons why you're in the high school gym, or something like that. When you go there, you don't really notice that it's an addition. We took great care in trying to tie it into this new building, because we're very sensitive to what happened when the concrete additions were added.
It's obvious.
Yeah, it does. So we will talk visiting and see if there's anything.
So I had two questions. One about the project that's already completed. So with all the windows that were replaced from single pane to anything better than single pane, are we going to recognize any kind of savings in terms of our heating bills? And how, if so, will we start saving them this winter?
We, that's no question, so I guess we definitely will.
So there should be some budgetary savings in that line, I don't think?
However. Especially at the time we did them too, because there's, there's Turner could probably speak there, but after we ordered our windows, it was almost all of a sudden markups after our COVID debt.
Right.
Companies come out of business, so it was a really good time to do that.
High-efficiency boilers and insulated windows and things like that are wonderful, but they're also offset by astronomically higher fuel oil costs and natural gas costs and things like that.
I think the reality is, yes, you will see, obviously, you're going to lose less with those windows than you were before. The payback on windows is historically not. It's pretty long to get, to recover it.
Yeah, just wondering.
To counter, like, you did have a lot of, a lot of locations in that, in those windows where you could almost see daylight through in certain spots, and a lot of the seals were bad. So yes, I do think you will, and I think there to have the boilers as well is a really big, you know, energy savings for that one.
And my other question, kind of following up on that with our timing of purchasing the windows, with the next project, are there any items that you are anticipating a problem with due to some rag lifelong COVID issues of not being able to get a floor tile or whatever?
Or ships stuck in the sewer.
Yeah. Are there things that you guys are anticipating buying now, hoping that it's the correct thing? Because if not, we're not going to see it for two years, and this 2024 project is going to turn into a 2030 project.
I will tell you, there is still concern with a lot of products. The one that we're facing currently is HVAC equipment. The dev project is a total mafia that we ordered this stuff a while ago, and we're still waiting on it. And what I'm told now is not COVID direct, but it's the whole chip thing, because the processors in the equipment use a chip like a car does, like any piece of computer equipment does. And so we have many cases, units manufactured sitting there. So yes, we're going to be watching closely with mechanical equipment. That landscape hopefully will change. I think one of the things that we're doing, and we always try to do with bid, and take bids, if we can get bids in before Christmas, it really is the perfect time to bid, because folks who do Kate over all the time are coming to conclusions, they're looking to fill their plate for the next year, and we can get bids by December, that gives us January, February, March to get approvals and places to order to place, so we can have stuff landing here when we need it.
Turner, Turner's also been great helping us apply a lot of pressure on vendors when things are promised and not delivered, or promised again and not delivered. So sometimes it's moving away from those vendors, and then sometimes it's a lot of test phone calls from, you know, us and Turner, trying to make sure that we get those things.
I think that addressed your question further. So we're building, now we got our approval, final documents, we're ready for building the meeting and schedule more detailed. And as Chris said, we're, we know those lead times. We track it as a national organization, what's going on. So mechanical equipment, it was a 16-week lead time. We currently have multiple projects going on, we're built in six months, and those projects are falling right on schedule because we're all predicted. Window systems typically were eight weeks.
Used to be eight to 10.
Yeah, and they are, right, the stores of hardware historically, they're going from another eight weeks to eight months now. So we are tracking that, and we'll build it to the phasing and schedule, and then advise the district as far as the sequencing of the work and how that fits in.
So something that we're concerned about in the getting, maybe phase that for the second, you know, the second half as opposed to the first half, because it just, it makes it, it makes a difference, so in terms of when you can get stuff. But yeah, unfortunately, we're still feeling a lot of the effects, and I seriously question some things, you know? Really, is it, is it really that? Is there some mismanagement that coupled with that is causing it? So it's not, not the easy landscape we're having here the past couple years, so I appreciate, I appreciate the question, Chris.
The last thing that I would like to mention, a similar topic, is your turf and track. We, we don't have two summers to. We, we don't have two summers to work with. We have a limited timeframe because of the AD and the ones submitted to the state. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room. Usually we can ask, we can ask the end user or those that are using the space, when is the best time for this to come down to be out of service?
January.
Yes. And that's more like a bid. So we, we don't have.
Then December started here, it's going to be just fine.
Yeah, so that one, we just right out of the gate, we don't have flexibility when it can be built. It's based on the state's comments and aid and wanting to be approved.
How long will it take you to replace that tractor?
That's something that Turner might be able to.
The actual play, excuse me, the actual placement of it is, is not that likely. It's getting, getting the turf here and then getting the folks that do the installation because they're kind of a rolling crew. So it's really important that if you're ready for that, it goes pretty quickly, but it's prepped on the sub base and getting everything else ready for it. So I mean accomplishing it in a summer and having it ready for the fall for what we're going to do here. But you already have a disconstruction there and a lot of the infrastructure is already there. That's unchallenged. It just be, it's just getting the bids in and getting that order so that it hits.
Along those lines, I'm well congested right now. I mean, this is a criticism, but what? I think Danny said it too, that I heard about constantly was the length of time it took to do the stadium seating. And I think some of the product, you know, because people saw it every day because they were at events and couldn't sit anywhere. So and unfortunately, that's what means a lot to people is the sporting events. But I would, you know, to, so at least amount of time that turf can be ahead of commission will. You know, that, I'll be honest with you, that was disappointing. It took a long time, you know, and there was a lot of, you know, but we heard about it constantly.
It looks like it took a lot of time and it didn't look like there was any progress. It's not like you'd seen Monday and came a week later and saw anything different. It just looked like it was just never even being touched, which I know there was behind the scenes things. The visual was that like it started and then you're like, hey, who wants to go on a vacay? You know?
Yeah, there was, there was components in that that from where we started, not to, I mean, we kind of went step two before. From where we started in the original design to where we, where we ended up, the iterations that we went through to get there were a bit time consuming. And we did have some lag there in between figuring out ultimately what was the best solution up there, the most cost effective solution. I think at the end of the day, what we did was the most cost effective solution for what, for what we needed to do. And it also fit the bill. You know, the side effect of that was that anytime in a project that you kind of stop and reevaluate to kind of readjust, to, to course correct, if you will. Yes, you run the risk with the contractor, say, all right, well, let me know when you're, let me know when you have it figured out now. But I'll, you know, come back over. But in between, I get, oh, is it, you know what I mean? And that, that did sort of plug into it.
Well, like I said, that unfortunately, people are out there all the time watching or running there. Sporting events was something they can see every day.
Certainly, certainly.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one other thing with the ethics, so is there any plan for landscaping on the southern side of the field that we have those tree rooms? And I don't know how the neighbors feel about that. Do you know, like, has landscaping to mitigate some of the lighting, things like that for the neighbors out on the street?
We can look at, I don't, mitigating light would be.
Well, just noise. The trees that are there provided a buffer and it's clear why they're removed. But you know, so I think we need to help that out if there's a concern.
We can work with Ron, Lane and Connor and others to provide something that's more easily maintained and have animals.
With things that are going to damage the turf and track and obscure, you know, obscure cameras. If you have the big, the big power units there, then I'm going to look at that. And there's different stuff to add. And again, if we can reach out to the people on Elizabeth Street, we can beneficially throw it in as well.
I'll be right back. If you change the time of the sunset from. The worst time to be out those late two blocks of the game.
It says surprise shade right there.
We just have to go inside the booth. It's into windows.
Anything else? So the one final thing I just, you know, I always want to look out for Waterman and State Street. It feels like we are doing a lot of work at the high school and the middle school. And the FUDs are going to really turn it into like state of the art, beautiful, beautiful facilities. And yet you walk into a lot of classrooms at Waterman and there's really not adequate storage. There's painted cinder block walls there. So as we kind of look at, you know, determining projects, I would just say, if we can kind of keep an eye on that, talk to those teachers, what do they need for functional storage? Because what you guys do looks absolutely phenomenal, but I think sometimes we forget about upgrading spaces for our little ones.
We, we actually have, well, it, that's one a tough one for me because I, I love Waterman. And one of the biggest barriers that we have, especially at Waterman, is the maximum cost alone. We can only spend so much in that building. And so it's, it's, for me, it's disheartening because of the way the state looks at your buildings.
Well, I was saying, I remember you saying this a couple of years ago, but.
So the state looks at your occupancy of your buildings. And they have this grand case calculation to figure out how much money you can spend on the building. And that bottom line resets, or if you use, but one is a smaller building, less occupancy, so you get less money. The high school, middle school, we're at occupancy. We have higher numbers.
Yeah, actually this year, the school is exceeding occupancy, they have the highest increase in enrollment. So that is a change.
So the state's still going with occupancy from, you're good with the state. You don't want to. They already weigh those things in. But, but it's something that when, one means something that's out of Waterman and we have those dollars available. We definitely want to work with you to look at what can we do at Waterman, what should we do?
And so just to be clear, you know, for the thousands of people that watch this on Friday nights, because I know that we get a big feedback meeting. The, the limitation, the financial limitations on Waterman are not set by this board or by this district or by you. They are set by the state and that is kind of our guiding light because we're trying to get able dollars for all those construction projects.
And when you do high dollar repairs, like what happened in the basement and the boilers, we max out that cost a lot.
Necessary, but not fun.
Not pretty, but.
But I appreciate that.
Like I love what you guys did with the gym floor, like repurposing that to in the comments area. If there are things that, you know, maybe could be repurposed from other buildings to just kind of, you know, upgrade some of the facilities.
For the French.
Waterman. Yeah. You know, maybe we can kind of reuse and recycle a little bit.
Anything else you guys have to say? Thank you so much. Thanks for coming on.
Thank you all so much.
See you for the next couple of years. All right, coming up next, we have our special presentation for our audit overview, which is something that we do each year. Rose and Saint Emma comes every year and gives us a high level overview. Connor can jump in on this. The board does have a giant packet on this. I promise, you promise we will not be going through line by line by line by line on this tonight. But the board does.
Slide, slide that full.
Does, the board does have a full text.
They have the cover page, so. Now just Connor, what should we do for a quick?
Yeah, so this is previously we had Dr. Angel for, or for, 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 for auditor. And three years ago, that was their RFP. And now we have Rose and Saint Emory and Mike Hassan. So this is their third year. So just like a year, they come in and talk about times of the audit, how they're doing, fund balance wise. Just give kind of a very high level overview of everybody has a nitty gritty in front of them. So they want to take a deep dive, but I'll start by paperless.
Yeah, in your package is the full presentation on the right hand side, the left hand side has the financials. Lots of pages there, good reading stuff or can't fall asleep. So I'll run through the slides pretty quickly. Some required communications in the package. I'm not sure if you've read this stuff in advance, but a lot of these are pretty standard type stuff. I'll walk through the annual financial information, single audit and ECA real quick. So to the required communications, it's basically saying that, you know, we perform the audit courts with governmental auditing standards. You as the board have, you know, governmental requirements oversee our, you know, responsibilities to take the financial statements. Some of the bigger, you know, communication to talk about is some of the bigger estimates in the financial statements. I know this slide is a little big or a little small on the bottom, but the numbers are fairly sizable. Some of these assumptions are basically estimates that are made by either the district or outside the district. Quick examples to retire plans here. If you look at your financial statements, you have what we call proportionate share of either ERS or TRS, the liability or asset. And the state of New York actually just passed here, the returns of both these systems, they basically became assets to work to skin the atlas. $12 million is TRS and then $641,000 for ERS. What that basically represents is the return on investments that these systems had. You have a proportionate share in that return. So basically it gets recorded in your financial statements.
As of what date, sorry?
This is actually as of basically a year ago. So, so what happens is if you look at my slide here, and I did the same slide with the, the guys in their school, they shook up like about five days ago. They asked me about the return. And I said, if you look at the 30 year, 10 year returns, it's about nine percent for each system. But you look at what happened last year, like 30%, 33% and 30%. So it's a big return. So that really that gets, you know, pushed into the numbers. So it makes it look better on paper as of, you know, basically 63021. And your financials are 63022. So it's always off a year. So if you look at the markets now, it's kind of taking a beating.
And also just for everyone's general knowledge, ERS and TRS are the retirement funds for the teachers and the employees that we are required to.
Have.
So it's not extra money that the district has because it has.
These assets and liabilities, normally they're liabilities for most financial statements. But because New York state does a pretty good job of requiring, you know, pretty current funding. The next slide actually shows this real quick. You can see, you know, one of the slides, this shows that, you know, the biggest five teacher systems in the, you know, US. New York state is the best funded as of all the same date too, 113%. If you go back, look at Illinois is the worst off at only about 45%. So that basically means in Illinois, the school districts will have to fund that at some point. They've already promised the benefits, they're going to pay into it. In New York state, you're actually net 113% of your overfunded per se, actual analysis as of Jupiter. So, so that shows that New York state, you know, I can make your contributions on an annual basis. Connor knows there's a cash contribution that's determined almost like a full year in advance or before and then paid in. So what basically they're doing, you're trying to estimate how much they need to have put into the systems, both ERS and TRS. So that's what gets reflected in the current numbers.
So I'm sorry, so given where we're trending right now, where things are down. And if we make some assumptions, we will do like six, 10 months, nine months. Does that mean that we may have violated those funding requirements?
They, they never hit you instantaneously. So next year's rates are already determined for your budget and even the next year is already projected out. It won't be for basically three more years out if they really have a market, a huge decline where they think you have to pay in, say 15 or 20% of your payable dollars at that point. So it's, they try to make it, make sure that you can budget, you know, a couple of years out. So when the actuaries come out, they actually project out and they kind of stick with that. They've never gone back and said, we got to re-project that out. So New York state at one time was down to about 96% teachers, 95% ERS was back at 80%. The schedule in back of the financial statements that shows about seven years of history, you can see, you know, the state of New York's done a good job of funding both systems pretty well. But as it declines, you'll see that your contribution rate will go up, but it won't be for a few more years.
But is something for us as a forward leaning or is something that we've got to keep in mind?
Keep in back of minds. And you have enough ample notice, Connor knows, with the budget that, you know, it won't be a surprise to the, to the budget that are currently here. So they, they estimate the, the required contribution versus a cash contribution based on percentage for employee, you know, employment numbers, I mean, your salaries. And basically they tell you that pretty much two or four years in advance. So the next slide is more required communications. This is another one of those big estimates. This is your other folks' employment benefits. Not really a lot of changes this year. This is something that's not funded by the school district on a cash basis. But there's the promise, the benefits are going to pay out to your retirees. And the current, you know, estimate for current employees, what that's going to cost, you know, when it has its quotes retired. The biggest swing here, you can see the $40 million liability as of the end of this year versus 48 last year. All that really represents is discount rate used by the actuaries. All they update, and then there's an off year, all they use is update the discount rate, the discount liability. And the rates all went up 3.5, 4%. And as the rate goes up, the liability goes down. So the theory is that you earn money on this. So basically your, next year, you'll have a full evaluation done by the actuaries again. And what you'll see is they'll, they'll adjust that number again, but the interest rate will probably go up again from 3.5, 4% or something major from the Fed. You know, they also project out healthcare benefits, things such as that nature. There hasn't been a lot of changes. When this first came out a few years ago, there's a lot of swings in the first couple of years as they kind of figured out where the healthcare trends rates are going. But now it's kind of stabilized for schools. But going back to what I said, you don't fund this on a cash basis. This $40 million liability just sits on your books as a long term liability determined by actuaries. The state of New York does not allow you to fund it actually on a cash basis either. From the required communications, management was well prepared. It's some hats off to Connor's teams. Great job overall. Everybody works really well with us. We got through everything very quickly. We were one of the first districts that were out to do the field work. We got through everything very quickly during the course of the year. Connor, Todd, the team reaches out to me and any questions. So it's not a surprise when we show up, if there's some questions in advance, we talk during the course of the year. It helps get through the audit very quickly. So just great job overall for the entire team here. Rest of requirements here are really just standard stuff. We just basically say that we're independent of management. One of the things here is highlighted red is just because we do prepare your financial statements or prepare the three sets of financial statements. We just basically say we're independent and, you know, we have these things called safeguards. So basically in my audit, in a firm, we have to have a secondary partner review everything independently because of the requirements of professional standards. So we have another partner reviews everything independently myself every year to, you know, you know, to keep it independent to bail off so that we don't. But management takes responsibility for everything. There's nothing that, you know, Connor or Todd doesn't understand, you know? So, so that's just kind of highlighted. That was some rule changes with the professional standards a few years ago. So we just highlighted that to say that. Next slide really kind of talks about the financial statements, the highlights of it. You can see the 61 pages in your financial statements. If you really have nothing better to do, you can read through that. But, you know, I'll just point out a couple of major changes this year. They're all called majors. I'm an auditor, I'm excited about accounting things. But the first bullet point, unmodified audit opinion. That's a clean audit opinion, that's the best type of audit opinion you can get. That's the first time that opinion's changed in probably about 20 years. Professional standards try to make an opinion more easier to read and understand. So if you don't, if you can't read and understand it, let me know. I'll reach out to professional standards, it still doesn't work. But the audit opinion is about three pages long, kind of explains what we did, how we did it. It puts it more, I'll call general terminology in there. So it's supposed to be easier for the average reader to understand what that opinion means. It's the first time it's changed in 20 plus years. So a lot of the basic financial statements are fairly similar to past years. One of the things we wanted to point out in the middle, the balance sheet governmental funds. If you recall last year, we had extra classroom activities was actually in the governmental, in the general fund and now moved into a special revenue fund. There's different accounting you do for that. Because it's more confusing, because you don't vote on ECA revenues and stuff. So we actually, you know, decided to move that out of general fund to special revenue fund. So I highlighted that because that was a new change last year. So schools had an option to kind of put it in one fund or the other. A lot of our schools kind of switched from one fund back to another fund. Some schools just kept it. So that just, just points that out. That's why I highlighted that. So it's actually a total special fund, the ECA. It's not deemed, we call fiduciary type activity as it was probably before last year for the last 25 years, it was called fiduciary. It's no longer considered that. So in the last little bullet, I highlighted red here, combining non-major governmental funds. In the back of your financial statement, just takes all those non-major funds, including the extra classroom activities fund, and shows them broken out in the back of the financials. Historically, most preschoolers would break down the back. In the past, because you had less funds, it was easier to put on one page in the front, but it was kind of getting crowded. So we decided to move it to the back, which is appropriate for professional standards. Next thing to report now, internal control of financial matters. No material weakness, deficiencies, nothing to report here. Everybody did a great job. We have a couple, like, local housekeeping stuff, I saw from what Connor spoke about, but nothing that raises up to, you know, required communications to you guys. The only thing I got to communicate to you really is that, you know, you have the four percent limitation on the general fund, how much you can carry over. You're sitting at thirteen-point-eight percent at the end of this year. A lot of this, you know, really from a result of a lot of federal dollars coming to the door that we have to use first. So what happens is, almost all my school districts, as I said in the EDF meeting, are over the four percent. Some are even higher than your thirteen-point-eight. So this is very common. It's probably going to happen for the next couple of years, because there's a lot of unexpected federal dollars that came to the door. As you see one of my slides coming up, it'll show you a couple, you know, some of the federal dollars for the last three years. You'll see that exponentially grew quite a bit, so. So the single audit reporting package, so also here, is basically the audit of the compliance of the federal grants. This is actually another clean audit opinion on the compliance. We audit compliance, meaning we audit the major programs, we call them. And that's the, we call the educational stabilization funds, ESF funds. Those are actually the ARPA monies, all the special monies that came through. So we did a special compliance auditing work on that. We also did work on the school food service program again. And both those came back clean, meaning from our standpoint, there's nothing to report, meaning, you know, to send that money back to the state of New York. So the next slide is something, myself and we talked about the EDF meeting, it wasn't in their slide at the point, which is kind of going back to the summary. You can see, you know, the total federal dollars was five-hundred-twenty-eight thousand dollars three years ago when we first started, and yet jumped up to eight-forty-eight to one-point-five. If you look at child nutrition funds, five-hundred-fifty-seven thousand came through the door. That's historically, basically, all the school food service programs are basically free for skinny analysts. So you've got a lot of money in the programs in twenty-one and twenty-two that basically were because of the, you know, going on with the ARPA monies and with the feds that in USDA, they basically made schools, you know, free school lunch across the board, all schools. So all our schools saw huge monies come through there. That's going to drop off in twenty-three, because now they're back to the, the back to the old days of eligibility and everything else. If you look at the numbers here, the one-hundred-and-ten-thousand we saw three years ago is more probably traditional. Right, Connor? I mean, it's going to go up a little bit because of inflation. And if you look through the slides there, education stabilization funds, the top line there, that's all unique one-off monies too. So, and that, that money is kind of, it starts expiring, you're being used up fully in the twenty-three and a little bit into the twenty-four, you know, cycles. Like, your special education funds are pretty consistent, Title I and all other funds. So you really don't historically have a lot of federal dollars in grants, but because of all the stuff going on at the Fed level, all the school districts saw a huge bump up in stuff here. So we just wanted to point that out to you. So helps the, the school food service, for example, the fund, because pretty much everything's fully funded, and another district obviously funds that, because it usually runs at a lost position, but it pretty much did run in a lost position because of all the extra funding from the feds. So last but not least, extra classroom activity audit. This shows your cash receipts and spurts bits. Amy and Jamie do an excellent job working with us, giving to all the clubs, working through the clubs. Basically, we give a modified audit opinion here, so it's still a very good opinion, but it's not a perfect opinion. It's the same opinion in the past. Basically, we say, we modify it because, you know, we can audit a lot of the cash receipts coming into our, we're just not sure that a hundred percent is there, because people don't use, like, ticket counters, ticket one to ten, they don't use a profit or loss statement, which is consistent. So basically, we say we can audit everything that's there. We can audit, all your spurts went out the door, no problems, signed off by everybody. But we basically give you a modified opinion saying, out of the one-twenty-nine that came in the door, could there have been a hundred and sixty? Maybe, highly unlikely, but that's why we give you a modified opinion here, so. Very consistent with our other school districts. We have, not, one of my ten school districts we do in our office has a clean audit opinion, a hundred percent here. And in the big scheme of things, the audit went very well. We don't really have any findings or concerns, it's just, you know, one of the things they want to see people use is profit or loss statements. A lot of your clubs historically don't really do a good job of following that, you know, process. So that's really why we get to that modified opinion. So last but not least is, you know, we don't really have anything to report other than the profit or loss statements, it's not consistently used, some deposits not detailed. One of the things I would say here is, you've gotten better every year. You always listen to what we say, and they kind of keep improving at what they do. Some of my school districts, when I first started with them, their idea of like cash receipts was a post-it note with a number written on it. So, I love a good post-it note here and there, but the reality is, there's, you need to have supporting documents of what the money came from, the event. You guys do a pretty good job. I know both, you know, Jamie and Amy do an excellent job of trying to, you know, get the clubs to get the information, and the club advisors, individual advisors are working pretty hard to get it. But it's not a perfect system. But in the big scheme of things, everything went pretty, pretty well. You know, given the fact you get kids, you know, handling a lot of money throughout the, through the district. That's all I have, flying through it. Any questions? I usually never talk that way, so most people know me in my office, I can never, you know.
I just want to say thanks, you guys are great to work with, and thanks Connor and Todd and your whole team. You guys are so meticulous throughout the year, makes it easy, so thank you guys.
Any questions on anything that you saw in the packages, or anything that you saw in the packages that you want to reach out to me, like cards in there?
My only question was going to be, show us a school that's having their clubs do P&Ls and they give us their template, but since no one does it, I guess we're doing pretty good then.
You know, my four schools I sent off, my four schools I... I oversee all the school districts in some form or fashion, but Solvay's got a business person who oversees everything, and they're like hardcore. I feel like the teachers get scared of the poor guy and run away, but, but they're really good at getting stuff like that profit or loss statements, and really holding their feet to the fire. We still give them the same opinion, it's just, you know, it is tough. I mean, as I said to Connor, I'd be happy to sit with Jamie and Amy, or they do, you know, teaching the, you know, the teachers on how to, you know, run the program, have our staff come. I said this to the EDF meeting, Brianna was with me, unfortunately, she's out of sick, this week. Some other people in our office are too, except for me. So, so we are happy to come back and, you know, help teach that, you know, do that. We do this actually in North Syracuse School District too, which, you know, which is a little bigger, but, you know, usually we find the schools that, like, business people, or, you know, business teachers or kind of, those that are in charge, they do the best, you know, but, you know, as we would expect, right? But we're willing to come back, as I said to Connor, and at the meeting last week, sit there and teach this part room a lot, help you guys keep improving.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else to add? Thanks for coming in.
Sorry, I have cool pictures, I have pictures up there.
All right, next on the agenda, I'm going to group items F and G together, which is the approval of minutes from the September sixth meeting, and approval of minutes from the September twenty-eighth EDF meeting, which was a committee meeting, and that update will come in a couple more items when we do all the committee updates at once. Can I get a motion on F and G? All right, first by Amanda, second by Tim. Any questions? All of us in favor of approving F and G, please say aye. All right, that passes. We're going to move on to section three, reports. The first one we've got listed is the superintendent report, so I'll hand it over to Eric.
All right, thank you, Danielle. Just some good news to start with, some correspondence that I received, some thank you notes, and I will read them. Dear Connor Brown, Eric Knuthen, Board of Education, this letter is to thank you for your support in allowing the Skinniatus Library to hand a proposition for an increase in public funding onto the district's annual budget ballot. The positive level of community support from all three propositions was wonderful to see. We are both vital community organizations, and there's some overlap in our visions, this is a fact that we hope to continue to leverage in the interim. As we embark on building a new library facility and in the intervening timeframe, we will continue to communicate programs, plans, status, goals, and also continue to understand and incorporate the district's requirements to ensure that the library can best meet the needs of residents, of Skinniatus School District, our shared constituents. It is a pleasure working with you, and we look forward to more partnerships in the future. With sincere gratitude, Suzanne Deske, President of Board Trustees, and Nikki Morkey, Library Director. So, thank you to the board. Moving on, another thank you letter. Dear Eric, the Skinniatus Community Band would like to thank the Skinniatus Central School District and Board of Education for its support of the band's two thousand and twenty-two season. The use of the band room for weekly rehearsals and the bus transportation for members is greatly appreciated. The band is a community tradition. Having played at the gazebo for over thirty-five years, we're happy to be back after a two-year break. Our volunteer members come from all walks of life and range in age from thirteen to be. Band members enjoy making music and performing for our wonderful audiences. All of this is possible because of community support. Again, thank you for helping make the two thousand and twenty-two season possible. So we always function as an off-site rate location, and with our new auditorium, we couldn't wait to share, so. Thank you to the Skinniatus Community Band. This one's a big one, from the Secretary of Education, Washington DC. In recognition of the Skinniatus Middle School as Skinniatus, New York, two thousand and twenty-two exemplary high-performing national blue ribbon school. Congratulations on your recognition as a two thousand and twenty-two exemplary high-performing national blue ribbon school. Your commitment to building a welcoming, nurturing, nurturing school community and strong foundation of academic learning for every child is clear. Each day you work to empower and inspire your students to become lifelong learners and engaged citizens. Your efforts represent a powerful example of excellence in education. The US Department of Education acknowledges your unwavering commitment to the well-being of every child and the possibilities that you create for the next generation. Schools like yours demonstrates all students' background or circumstances can meet the highest expectations that we have for their achievement. Your recognition as a two thousand and twenty-two national blue ribbon school was made possible through your intentional collaboration with parents, families, and your community. Thank you for your shared vision and dedication to every student's academic and mental health needs. You show what's possible for every student in America to succeed in and thrive. The entire staff of the United States Department of Education looks forward to celebrating your accomplishments at the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award Ceremony in Washington DC on November third and fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the Washington Hotel. Two representatives from your school, as well as your superintendent, are invited to represent your school at the ceremony. Congratulations on your accomplishments. Your school is truly an inspiring example of students, teachers, staff, administrators, parents, families, and community leaders, all working together through challenging circumstances to prepare our nation's students to succeed, to succeed. Sincerely, Miguel A. Carrano, Ed D., US Secretary of Education. About full fund. Huge congratulations to our incredible middle school, to the middle school principal at the time, Mr. Carracio, and our current middle school principal, Mr. Ali, that inherited one heck of a program. Congrats to middle school.
And you've got one of our staff members, is accompanying?
Yes, Scott Stagnita was chosen to represent the middle school and will be joining us when we travel to DC in November for the award ceremony.
Michael Carracio, right?
Michael Carracio. So the way it worked is that you were permitted to bring the current principal, or the current principal and the principal that was current at the time of the nomination, the superintendent, and a teacher representative. So the four of us will be attending in November. We're excited to know. Moving on, just a quick reminder for our Board of Education. Unique opportunity that the NISB convention, the annual NISB convention, back after a couple of years of Zoom format and things that were not as effective, is actually right here in Syracuse, Missouri. So for a treat, we have a number of board members that are going, it's from October twenty-seventh to the twenty-ninth. We also have a school law seminar that several board members have signed up for as well. Just want to say publicly thank you to the board bed for everybody that's able to go. It's usually a terrific event. They showcase amazing school programs from throughout the state. It's a great opportunity for board members to mingle and network with people that have shared mission in other districts, and it's just a fantastic opportunity to fudge off one another, share ideas, and learn how to make our schools a better place. So that is the NISB convention that's coming up. So, one of the things that I wanted to present tonight was, has to do with the New York State, the New York State Teachers Retirement System and the New York State Retirement Rules for both administrators and educators. So, going back to the beginning of COVID nineteen, before COVID nineteen, I should say, if you retired as an educator in New York State, there was a salary cap that you were able to come back and work for the state and make, that cap used to be thirty thousand dollars. Right before COVID, that cap was extended to forty thousand dollars a year. And then with the job shortages, the absenteeism, and the retirement wave that overcame the nation, that cap was completely lifted. So this created a rare opportunity for us in a number of different ways. First off, it allowed us to retain retired teachers that decided to come back out of retirement and help us. There's a number of teachers that we've employed this way throughout the district. Some are on a full-time basis, some are on a part-time basis, and they still exist as retired individuals and through memorandums of agreement that you'll see later on in the board packets there with the Administrators Union and the Faculty Union. It basically allows us to retain retired teachers and administrators, pay them on a per year basis. And this program just recently was announced at sunset, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. So what was originally designed to help schools, I know locally, Syracuse City Schools have, and somewhere had announced that they had over three hundred vacancies. This allowed schools like them to bring back all of these retirees, to fill some of those vacancies. It has another effect as well, that is, is good for individuals that elect to retire and return, is that they can actually earn more income. An additional income comes from the New York State Teachers Retirement System. It's not paid for by the school district or the taxpayers. And it also gives the school district a very rare opportunity to save on health insurance and then proactively recruit almost a year in advance for any vacancies that will experience. So you will see one of these up for approval tonight on the agenda, and I expect you will see this phenomenon to continue probably through January and February this year. So does anybody have any questions about how this works?
So just to clarify, the state is giving teachers and administrators the opportunity to retire and then come back and work for a limited time?
Correct.
And obviously, benefits both the individual, but the school district. For me, I would see the benefits, aside from some financial ones, are also allows the district to plan. So as we enter budget season, and we are taking educated guesses on student population and student needs, we can have a little bit more breathing room in planning our staffing and things like that.
Yeah, so twofold, on one hand, it is going to allow us to bring back some highly trained individuals for some really specialized assignments that we need. And on the other hand, it allows us to, we have a clear picture in September and October of who's going to retire in June. So we have two individuals already that are taking advantage of this. One is up the agenda tonight, one will be in the November agenda that we're certain of, and there's, there's likely to be several more, just because of the uniqueness of the opportunity. We've been asked, you know, what the likelihood is that this will continue past June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. And in Connor, in my circles, in the conversations that we have, yes, the realtors, we don't know, but if you ask our opinion, we would say we don't think so. With the federal monies drying up, that you just heard about in the audit, and the phenomenon also, that while this was initially conceived to retain retirees, it's having sort of a deleterious effect as well, is that it is incentivizing other retirees. So I think where some districts will benefit from it, other districts will probably lose from it. But in the end, for us, it's a, it's a really rare opportunity that we don't get caught in hiring season in reaction mode and competing with all of these other districts, where we can interview, take our time interviewing, go and source the right people, hold the right, the right types of performance-based opportunities, so we can watch our teachers with kids. It's directly supported to our strategic plan, that has to do with excellence in human capital. And we never, ever have a year to replace a teacher. And this is a very special opportunity. And really, it's one of those rare opportunities too, that very truly benefits both parties. So the teachers and the administrators take advantage of it, they benefit from it, the school district benefits from it, and it's a, seems to be a win-win all around. Okay, and the last thing is just a reminder, every Wednesday morning at eight-thirty, in response to another one of our strategic planning focus areas of communication, we're doing coffee and conversations. It's always myself, Connor Brown, and Greg Santoro. Eight-thirties on Wednesday mornings, come have a bagel, have some coffee with us. 8:30 on Wednesday mornings, come have a bagel, have some coffee with us, ask us anything. It was really trying to create some other opportunities in a less structured format for parents and community members to just come in and ask us anything.
And will that time fluctuate throughout the year for all of the working parents or community members who would also like to meet with you guys but can't, we want to say say.
So what I would say is we'll meet with anybody anytime by appointment. But we were trying to have something steady set up every Wednesday so that people could, some people could take advantage of it. I know it's inconvenient for people that are working. For anybody else that'd like to meet, simply call us, set up an appointment, and we'll have a meeting.
So I would like to push back on that and say, let's either, I'm not sure how to do it, whether it's alternate each month, but Wednesday's late 30 has a very specific target that it's typically good for. And that excludes a good portion of our families in this community that have two parents working or have to get a younger child off to preschool that doesn't start till nine. So think about a way to maybe offer it if it's, if you end up switching because of attendance, if it's the first and the third, Thursday, Wednesday, whatever the heck it is, this one's at this time, this is at another, and my only other thing.
Or maybe for like January.
Yeah.
They do it at 8:30 until January and then.
And then switch every like fourth or something.
Sure.
Or just break something so that you can get the consistency about reach more people.
Sounds good.
And I would just add to that, if, when that first note came out, that was sort of in the middle of, here's 10,000 things going on at your kid's school. Here's open house, here's back to schooling, don't forget to get to fill out this form.
Say that's.
Blah, 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 maybe just a little bit like her.
Sure.
I know it's in the parent square and it's like 18 messages back and I probably didn't even know. So. Do you need time? Yeah. Carrie's going to exit because it's senior night at the soccer game. And Carrie's got a daughter that's a senior, so she's going to. Do you want to make a real quick update on the mental health committee last week?
You want to jump in and do that? Sure.
Yeah. So we did.
Is that okay? Do you mind if she turns?
Oh, okay.
So she can go, Molly?
Yeah, I wish I missed it.
Yes.
We did meet last week. Attendance was good, not as good as usual, but still, you know, very good for a committee meeting. Talked a lot about kind of some of the things that are going on now. Laker links, little Lakers. High school kids have actually started having lunch with some of the mental health students. One of the things we talked about, we had one student come. Two are still interested, couldn't come because of sports. But just how do we reach more kids, even if they don't, you know, come to the committee? But, you know, how do we get, how do we hear from more students? And I think one of the things we talked a lot about is not always picking the same kids and not always going to the same pool, making sure that we, you know, don't always, you know, go to the athletic council or Morgan's message people or, you know, that we're spreading out to, you know, to anybody. The kid who's alone in the library or the kid who feels disconnected and.
Go and get those kids that are less likely to show up.
Exactly, yes. So it was a little, I mean, it was a little overwhelming. There was some talk of maybe like branching out at some point into individual schools because, you know, there was a lot of discussion about what each individual school was doing. And you have to be feeling a little bit more like we're going to be more effective if we can, you know.
Under, under one of our little bit different.
Exactly. So yes, we have our meetings all scheduled out for the year, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for being.
All right, we're going for your meeting.
Go Lakers, take pictures.
Be fast. Sorry, sorry for the.
No, no.
Any.
Before you go on, so you, have you had some of the Wednesday morning meetings?
We had our first one last week.
Number wise?
We had four or five people show up.
Three, three or four.
All right. And we'll continue to remind you.
I have a general question for you, if anybody else has any questions. Mine's an easy one because I see it coming up later in the agenda when we've got a page full of people. But how are we with our subs status? Are we feeling comfortable with the level of subs that we have hanging out pool or?
How is it any real different from previous year or from previous system?
Okay, but not concerning like we.
No, we're not suffering. And we actually, if you look at some of the names out there, some of the really hard-to-get subs like bus attendance and things like that are.
Yeah, I saw there was a full page of people, so I felt better about that. But I just wanted to see the room.
How's all your PK program going, Connor?
It's going really, really well. They fit right in. Our teacher is wonderful. I've heard nothing but accolades. I have a great video of Mr. Brown tumbling down the hallway with all the UPK kids on the mats. And maybe, do you want to jump in and just mention a little bit?
Kelly Sears is an amazing teacher. She has come in, taken the reins, and she is doing a phenomenal job. The kids are doing great. They're really fitting in. Everything is just, it's going beautifully, really, really nice.
Have there been any unforeseen obstacles, whether it's toilets? What's over the thing we're all about? Many tables, many pies, I don't know, whatever.
No, I just have this time. It's really been wonderful. Pat Brown is very creative and thinking of different ways because we are utilizing the specials classrooms for the UPK, but not the specials teachers. So he has some yoga that came in and there's some other ideas that Kelly and me are coming up with and it's just been really.
They can reach out the door handles and whatever other.
Well, yeah.
So far, we use some step stools. There are definitely stools. But yeah, everything's looking great. Kelly Sears is.
Kindergarteners are pretty little too. So if you walk through the hallway, you don't necessarily know that they're all UPK, but.
Yeah.
They're little, they're.
They're little, adorable.
They are super cute and super enthusiastic and energetic and happy. Can't ask for much more than that.
And Toshka to Pat tonight, he goes, oh, oh, I am just, okay, I already told you, life. I was like, that's not at all, Pat.
You should see him crawling all over.
Just his reaction.
Did I show you that video?
Yeah.
I did show you. I'll share it with you all, yeah.
Good, so the reason why I bring it up is from an objective perspective. Remember what we talked about? And in January, Connor, is probably where we're going to start thinking about '23, '24, right? Or '20?
Already thinking about it.
Correct, but having, you know, we were in a bit of an abstract theoretical space. How's it going to work, you know, small deals, small parties, you know, where we're going to house them and all that sort of fun stuff, how we're going to staff it. And this was a major kind of conversation. So I think we do ourselves a favor to really document it to the nth degree, pay close attention to all the details and everything else so that when we, when we have to make some decisions and allocations, et cetera, et cetera, we have all our ducks in the room.
One of the things Connor and I have been talking about is the way the funds have come in and what that actually looks like dollar for dollar. So we'll actually be able to share that with you probably right after Christmas so that the board can decide, hey, here's what it actually costs. This is the space that we actually have. Can we do it again next year because it has the same scale?
Or how we do it next year and how we need to move things around, et cetera. But we've got to have the detail. Again, we've had some real good opportunities.
I guess onto that, I would also add enrollment in preschool is already set. They're already filled up for the year. This is not July anymore. So they know each school will tell you right now how many pre-K fours they have. So let's look at that so we can get a guesstimate of how many kindergarteners we have coming in and are we back down to four sections? Are we going to have to maintain five? And I know it's a guess, but it's, oh, we have six now. Okay, so whatever, we have six now. Are we going back to five? Are we going to be at four? And if so, because that means we're going to have the opportunity, if the budget allows and the board feels comfortable with the expense, are we going to add a second UPK class? Because a lot of this, even if you just took the money aside, there is a space component of this and a restriction on that. And we could at least do a little bit of labor work now before we start worrying about, we don't know the state number and it's coming in. It's coming next week, but it's really nice one. We can at least say, guys, just so you know, it looks like there's only 75 kids coming in for kindergarten. And even if that's 10 kids off, we're going to get one of our rooms back. Or don't forget, you've got to have an extra room now for first grade. So don't get your hopes up and don't be, you know. Anyway, it would be great, the sooner we can get just some of that very general information. And I think I would speak for everyone, we're not going to hold you to it if you tell us you anticipate 80 kindergarteners and you end up with 95. We're not going to get that, but it would be a good, it would be a good place for us to start to just give an idea from our preschools what might be coming our way.
And you said something really important there too, is that that bumper problem, kindergarteners that we have.
Is going first grade.
Is going first grade.
And I sat in on the curriculum session earlier and spoke about key through. And occasionally pumped you to it by saying, well, okay, so now we got UPK. So the other side of it is how do we integrate backwards so that we have the beautiful results that we seem to be seeing? So it's kind of a holistic, so what is, you know, any grand scheme of things since that's all, how are we going to cater for UPK, how well it's doing, what are the metrics, how they've been performing, how we've been staffing, how the program has looked? And then how do we enhance it if in fact we're going that direction? Maybe '23, '24 timeframe so that it, it acts as, it flows right into the rest of the program that seems to be looking beautiful.
I know there's a lot of thought put into, you know, how do you extend early literacy even a year earlier? So that'd be fun to watch these kids as they go through.
Yeah, and luckily, Haggerty and Foundations, which we talked about at the Curriculum Committee, have produced a pre-K component or UPK component. And there's also another program that's being used for the language comprehension portion.
Yeah.
Correct, so that was the whole premise of sat in earlier, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's already vertically aligned with the science of reading and complementary to the work that you heard about for the last few hours.
It was good stuff, by the way.
Absolutely.
Well, the big picture Gary's mentioning, even going out to the middle school high school, is it possible to get the course load reports for the high school classes, the middle school classes, to see where we're at?
Yeah.
Moment-wise, because I know some of the class sections are a little bit late. And do we keep offering those programs when you have three or four kids in the class section? And you're looking at an increase in number of lower ages. And we talk about moving classrooms. And we've had more kids in water than we have presently there now historically. So there's ways classrooms can be moved and we can do that shuffle if we're proceeding down another class section for UPK or those types of things. So it's not just a water issue, it's a district-wide issue because the high school spaces, middle school, you can move things around.
The section load reports are, that's exactly the conversation that we've been having. It's tied back to if we do have five or 10 senior staff members that decide to retire, it's not always a one-on-one replacement. It is for each and every one of those positions. Do we still have numbers to justify that position? What can be consolidated? Because consolidation here doesn't always just mean cut. Sometimes it creates the ability to create over there. So that's, that's the eye that we look at these things sort of. Not just, not just the dollar savings, but what can we create with that bandwidth that happens when a senior staff member retires? And you can either, maybe you don't have to replace that position or you have savings from that position that you can now leave elsewhere. That's that K-12 conversation that, as you're saying that, because that's where we, you're headed.
Well, I think as a board, we would love to get some previews of those conversations prior to, you know, April budget decisions when we are. Any insight that you can give us in advance, not at a detailed level, but just here's direction that we're thinking. Here's where we anticipate needing to add staff as we will be tightening staff at this level. Just makes it easier for us as we do go into budget season so we.
Yeah, so the board has been clear about, you know, everybody understood with COVID-19, the sort of normal rules of engagement were out the window where we had conditional needs that were caused by circumstances nobody could predict. But that's over now and we need to get back to presenting the community a very clear picture of what the budget will be, what the staff will be prior to the budget vote. That being said, there's always going to be contingencies for special education and there's always going to be contingencies for interventions. And those things will always be a subtly moving target, but not huge, you know, core instruction swings that you're going to hear about in June after the COVID disorder, the Ebola, the front row of that.
Any other questions? Tim and Andy have all said.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Up next, we've got Connor.
So.
This is manager.
Any presentations to talk about all the stuff I usually do. But I just had one small thing, a pretty good segue at the ABF meeting. We talked about adjusting the budget calendar a little bit on what we talk about these things. Because from January, when the new one comes out to April, we're not seeing too much here for us. If anything, it's a little bit more, but not too much more. So we're going to move that, move all these stocks up to more January, February, March rather than last minute making the decision in April. I don't know what the tax rate could be. So we'll be tracking what the program, administrative capital, components of the budget look like earlier. Obviously, like I already said, some individuals have a lot of opportunities to retire. So there are all these, obviously fluctuations like there always is. But I'm going to have a draft calendar for you guys in November to adapt as we move forward to the next few months of storage process. So there will be changes along the way, but we're going to have to start making those conversations earlier, so.
Okay.
And that was the only thing.
And questions for Connor? Okay, next up is the board update. So I just wanted to fill you guys in on a few things. I went to a board leadership conference in Rochester about a week and a half ago. There was about 40 other school board presidents or vice presidents there from a variety of school districts, big, small, state schools, not state schools, rural. It was a general meeting to talk about, you know, the function of a school board and kind of reiterate some best practice things. And then in between, especially during the breaks, is when you get all the good scoop from your peers and how they do things and how we do things and compare notes. The good news is any of our stressors seem to be the same stressors of every school board, no matter what kind of school district we are from. So that was very comforting to me personally. It was also refreshing to find out there are some things that our board is doing very well that in just chatting with the peers at my table, the way that we do agenda setting and have board members alternating in and out and get an opportunity to be there and be part of that. Some districts don't do that, and so some people said, oh, gosh, we want to implement that. The other, the takeaway that I had, and there's some other notes, but I won't revolve them now, was the creation of a governance document for the board. So it is created by the board and then approved by the board. And then every year or every two years, it's the pleasure of the board that approves it. It is reviewed and it's just kind of a set of operating rules for the school board, not for the individuals specifically, but for the board as a whole to live by going forward for future boards to come. So I found a template from another school board in New York and I have got man Gary and Carrie helping me. We are going to parse through it, customize it to make it a little bit more skinnier, flair on there. And then we will present it to the full board for review and discussion and for their input and then put it forward for adoption by this board. But it's a, it's a great tool just to make sure that we are all operating on the same page. And a lot of the stuff that we already know and discuss amongst ourselves, such as, okay, we know that follow the chain of command. If a parent presents you with an issue, you're, you know, you encourage them to talk to the teacher, then talk to the principal, then go to the superintendent. Not just come to the board because you don't like to grade your kid on a science test, but this is an in writing document. It is very specific about confidentiality, both with student matters and family matters and staff matters. Again, things that we learned from NISBA, we have all the required training, but reiterate some of that and just general operations of the board and how we want to conduct ourselves in meetings and things like that. So hopefully, we will have a draft version for the rest of the board to put their stamp of approval on or opine on in the, maybe in the next month or so. Because we do have a pretty good template. And then we'll present it to the rest of the board and they can jump on just to kind of keep it moving along and then hopefully adopt it by January. And then it will, in this case, be re-upped in July when there is a new board here after board elections. So that was a big thing from that. The other thing Eric hit on, there are four of us going to the NISBA conference, five of us. Tim, myself, Gary, and Tanya are going to go to the NISBA conference. And three of us are going to the LA conference the day before. There's a really robust schedule with a lot of different topics. I went, pre-COVID, I went to one of the conferences. Here's all the things. But there's a bunch of different topics that it kind of gives us all the opportunity to go to something that we find particularly interesting and then kind of share back with each other so you really get maximum exposure to everything. And we can just share and reconvene. And then there's also that great time to talk with your peers and bounce ideas off of them on how they function or what, you know, you think we could do better and things like that. So that should be pretty good. The only other takeaway from my Rochester thing that they kind of reinforced quite a bit, and I think it's just a small little thing, but it's actually a really big thing. School board meetings. School board meetings are our board meetings, district board meetings, they just happen to be open to the public. And there is a big misconception or confusion among people that this is a public meeting with back and forth exchange and things like that. And school board meetings fall into that same category as things that happen at the county level or at the state level that happen in all the, you might be able to go sit in a chamber and listen because it's an open meeting to the public, but it's not the public's meeting, which is why we have the rules we have around public comment at the beginning and the end and things like that. So I think that there's some work that we could do as a district just to help educate people on that. It's not our rule, it's how this body operates and I think people just sometimes don't understand that. You know, maybe we can just start educating people a little bit more about that so they don't think that we're just a bunch of meetings. But that's just how the rules of engagement for this capable are. But that's all I have. If any other board members wanted to add anything? Otherwise, we will, we will come back full knowledge at the end of the lesson. Be so smart.
As I said in our email, I think the board governs, you know, all boards, all of the boards have some rules of governance. All. And I think it's, it's a really good catch, UPK, to put out the training and it's something that we do well to adopt. And I said it to our text or email or whatever it was, but I think this is a really good one because it certainly helps us collectively and it really sets the stage for those coming behind. So kudos to Danielle for catching that.
All right, up next, we've got our committee updates and we've got four committee updates tonight. But one of them was the student support group and Carrie jumped in on that before she left. So the next update will be on the audit budget finance committee, which met earlier this month that Tim and I are on and Gary. Tim's going to give us that update.
Yeah, we kind of did, we talked about the audit, Mike did a great job doing it and obviously kind of did a wonderful job of the, the report. Committee calendar is, as Connor just said, I, it started a much earlier process, like start of the new year. And I think it's also important, sometimes you don't have all the answers. But when there's questions and there's anticipating some things, sometimes you can actually work on those things even knowing it's not solid, that, that much earlier in the process. So you're not, you're prepared to make those kinds of decisions. So the committee agreed on that. Committee talked about and, well, one second. Committee talked about wanting to increase the communication in the community with the community members using the parents' square, knowing that it's widely used by the parents, but trying to find different avenues to get those community people that want to, at least have that opportunity to get them involved and knowing that there's transparency, they can input their communications. And the last thing we talked about was the fund balance and the extras that's there. And we agreed that it should be, the committee agreed that it should be a, used on one-time things, not things that we budget for, things that we could reach out and fund that typically wouldn't be funded. And we were trying to brainstorm and we kind of agreed that we should go back to the district, back to the people that are in the buildings and get a list and then be able to backdrop that by the community, by the board after this district comes up with something. You were there, Danielle Linderson?
Yeah, no, I think that pretty much covers it. I mean, a large portion of that meeting, this particular time was spent reviewing the audit, so. And just, just so that you're aware, the meeting notes from ABF committee meetings, like we approved earlier, always get approved. The other committees are less formal, but ABF is a required committee by state ed and that's why their meeting minutes must be documented and approved.
Yeah, we know another thing was when we talked about Mike kept offering, I know in the past extracurricular advisors, maybe some of the staff development days where he had left, is, is take a small portion, anybody's advisor, I'm coming in and just run through some things that make sense. Let me tell you, this is better than anything I remember. So, but it's still, we get it, we say some kind of awareness and districts may in Africa try to educate them. So we're not dealing with the financial issues.
Oh, all right, no problem. And then the curriculum committee, which I mentioned tonight at five o'clock before the board meeting. Amanda, you going to do that update?
Sure. So we had a great meeting tonight spearheaded by the lovely Francine to talk about our K-8 literacy initiatives here in the district. And it was a really wonderful opportunity to hear from a lot of the K-8 teachers and reading specialists of what this journey has been like for them, but also what the daily teaching is like for students in the classrooms. And also hearing how it all aligns as kids move from each grade level to each building and what that really looks like and what we are working very, very hard to accomplish and continue learning here. We had about 26 people here today and our next meeting will be led by Brian. They will be every day at five o'clock right before the board meeting. So our next one is November first and it's just a great opportunity to dive in and hear a little bit more about what we're doing here in the district. And what really stood out to me is just the enthusiasm of some of our staff members and what they are excited about in sharing and learning themselves. So it was phenomenal. So thank you for setting that up and looking forward to it in our next meeting.
Kudos Francine and, you know, the principals and all the amazing educators that are engaged in this work. Just to hear a little bit, you know, a 30,000-foot flyby of how incredibly complex and nuanced all this work is to, to lay that foundation and, oh yeah, by the way, do it there at the global pandemic, pretty remarkable.
The other committee that met is the policy committee, which Amanda and I are. And one of the things that I discovered is that NISBA has about 10,000 policies that you can pretty much use the template of and then customize with all the right words and all the fancy language, which would save us a lot of time, especially because I have not gone to last school as much as I wanted to or as Amanda. So our first task was to look at a policy regarding donations because we, a few meetings ago, had a very generous community member that wanted to donate a handful of picnic tables. And although we love the support for our modern community, it raised a lot of questions for us, like who's responsible? And do you let people put their name on things? Because what if you wanted to make the pencil box? Like where's the threshold? And then, you know, it gets sticky. So we took a first pass at that policy and because it has a couple of things that we weren't sure about, we are still working on tightening it up and running through it with Connor because he's our business guy and there are things that relate to grant money and donation money. We just wanted to get his approval on it. And then the way that the policy committee works is, once we have a first draft of the policy, it goes to the full board for a public reading. So hopefully by our next meeting, which is in November, we'll do a first read-through of that policy. Board members can opine or say, I don't like this, or let's clarify that. And then we will tighten up any changes, if there are changes. And then there's a second reading and at the second reading, you can vote to approve or not approve a policy. So it's a good one to start with, is probably things that we've already been doing subconsciously, but it will be a good opportunity to just tighten it up and have it in writing and kind of give us a guide instead of a guess when someone helps with whatever their donation may be. So that's what we're working on with the policy committee.
Just before you move on, just to mention, the strategic planning committee has, has to do with buildings and capital projects, not to be confused with our strategic plan that we did over the last year, which has to do with, you know, strategic roadmap for, it's all very confusing.
And when is that committee meeting?
So that committee meeting happened tonight with the Turner National Road presentation. Because typically what happens is those ramp up very much more around building types. So once we start talking about schedules, like they, they had mentioned removal of the turf and how it impacts sports, at that point, before that point, we will get additional committees on the calendar. But it's not the kind of committee that has to meet every single month because right now we're in a whole pattern. They ramp up a lot. I know Dan sat on the committee with me last night when a lot of the conversation, discussion had to do with designing the gymnasium, HVAC questions and when you're in the decision-making phase working with the architects. So it sort of ebbs and flows with the design of the building.
And would this also, correct me if I'm wrong, but would this be a good opportunity as we are trying to figure out how many kindergartners are coming in and how many classes we're going to have and if there's going to be shifts in a building? This is also kind of a nice conduit for community members that are part of that committee who may not pay attention to our meetings even though all the seats are full, to understand kind of some of the back process of what's going on and why, why are we moving the whole kindergarten wing to another side of the building? Or just to help, is that some of the conversations that happen in there at a very high level?
Building utilization. Going back a number of years ago, I know that the building utilization study that you permissioned as a board came from that committee. So those are, those are the types of conversations.
One we're transferring.
But it says, but for the most part, it's, it's to communicate what is happening with the building and campus as national road surface.
The last time we had that committee meeting, we used the cafeteria and there was a substantial one. I mean, it was 40, 50 people that were.
A lot of interest about contributing design that you actually see part of.
Danielle, I've got just two things. So one is very minor, but I noticed that our board committees on the website are outdated, much as I love this Tom. I don't think he's coming to do a next round of our committee meetings. He still loves to sit on there. Well, not for, not for policy. He can't go without. And then Danielle, you and I had talked about bringing before the board is part of the policy committee, whether or not we wanted to, the board's input on moving forward with a policy that would look at sports boosters. And we wanted input from the board on whether or not you would like us to look further into that? NISBA has a lot of templates?
NISBA, as part of their donation policy, there was like a little footnote. Please also reference booster donation policy. And that was very, it's a little bit more specific and it's specific, talks more about the relationship between boosters organizations and the school. And my first impression of reading it very quickly is it also serves as sort of an agreement. You know, here are our rules of engagement with each other in terms of your role as a booster organization, our role as a school, your responsibilities are here, ours are here, make sure we are all clear. It's not a game of play. But that is the, that is the board. If you guys would like us to look at that, we will take a first pass with that. If you want to deal with that for the future, that's my two.
Whatever you look at, it's a separate, like many schools have a sports booster, one for all.
You mean a unified sports booster? You mean every community in central New York has one, except our district?
Yeah, we used to have one. You saw it, it didn't live for that long, did it?
At most before May, I don't know.
Yeah.
We had separately, unified, we had separately, unified, we had separate.
Yeah, right. I mean, it's been on, but yeah, depending on who's the leaders and we can create it though. So I'm just curious, was there language when you looked at, was there language? Was it considered like, like?
You know, why don't we do this?
More just kind of like insert here than the name of the booster. I don't know that it separated it out.
Yeah, you didn't separate it out whether it was a unified or an individual.
But yeah, it was more of an agreement and especially it came from the donations because a lot of times boosters will raise money and purchase certain equipment that then is sometimes becomes the capital gain for the district. And then other times they want to back at the embassies or they want to borrow up for weekend practice. So that's where it kind of, I think, played in to the donation policy. It wasn't so much layout for what athletics season had.
You know, we could do, I can forward to all the, just the generic template, just so you can at least get a first review of it to say, we are not ready to tackle this yet, or this is pretty, makes, this is pretty logical, it makes sense. Let's have you guys review it and then Amanda and I can do a first draft on it. All four of everyone for your two cents. We did not want to even dip into that because we really, even though we are the policy committee, we're guided by what policies the board wants us to just tighten up or review or update. It's not our, we don't get to just pick what policies we feel like touching. We need to do the first pass to make sure the language, that is district language. Otherwise, it's a team thing.
And I believe for, yeah, we, we removed it from the NISBA template for the donation policy.
Yeah, it's just a, we worked.
It's just for now, let's completely take out, determine if you want to tackle it later.
All right, so I'll send that to everyone and you guys can just take a look. And you might say, let's deal with it second half of the year or whatever, or tomorrow, whatever you guys decide. And then we can. All right, so that's it for committee updates. So if there's no further questions, we will move on to new business. Do you guys agree with that? Okay, I am going to group A, B, and C together. Item A is the establishment of the extracurricular labor club. Item B is the establishment of the solar panel club. And item C is the establishment of a position for the Odyssey of the Mind Assistant. And you, as a board, have the attachments in board docs. Can I get a motion to approve A, B, and C, those three, those two clubs and the position assistant for Odyssey of the Mind? I'll go Dan first, Amanda second on that. All those in favor of passing A, B, and C, please say aye. Any, I didn't ask if anybody had any questions. Sorry. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions. It's just, it's great that these clubs come on, especially, yeah, I saw something else, which is great. Make sure kids can get involved.
Before anyone listening, can you just take a second to explain why we are establishing a club that feels like it's already up and running, like how that works?
The way clubs come to be is that they have to exist and sustain participation for a number of years and then they become official with district funds.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess just, I think this is just a comment, right? It's not a question. The solar panel club, right? It almost seems very finite and very specific as opposed to an alternative energy club that, that has a broader scope, which really allows us to have greater continuity and all that sort of stuff. It is truly just a comment. I understand your concern behind a solar panel club. But something to consider or something supposed to talk about is, oh, you know, is that if you broaden this scope, we have so many alternatives. And I think what we really have to is alternative energy as a pool because, because this is as narrow as it gets.
I, I think that their actual focus is broader than they're made.
And as such, and as such, to allow us, yeah. One of them goes on, another in perpetuity, but has a broader scope and it's more meaningful.
So to that, if we approve this as the solar panel club and next year they see we are the solar panel plus everything else club, because they were already, they do not have to start from scratch. We will just rename it. Okay.
Easy, easy guys.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of A, B, and C, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, those passed. We are going to move on to D and D, E, D, E, and F are going to be together. And it's going to take me a while to read this, but I will read those best I can. Under D, personnel resignations, retirements, terminations, and leave requests, we have the approval of the retirement of Mike Major, our vice principal of high school. We have the resignation of John Wheeler. We have the unpaid leave for Joanna Fiaco. Under substitute temporary appointments, we have Spencer Mack as a substitute teacher, Maggie Crowder as a substitute teacher and teacher H, Paige Lynch, as a substitute teacher and teacher assistant. Quentin Skip Lockwood III as substitute teacher, teacher assistant. Carol Hamilton as a substitute teacher, teacher assistant. Pamela Syfers as a substitute. Pamela Syfers as a substitute nurse. Jen Macarelli as a bus attendant. Thomas Steves as a bus attendant. And the attached extracurricular advisors, which is an art board packet. And the appointment of Marshall Pope as the seating designer for the fall play of the 22-23 school year. We've also got.
We're all prepared.
Oh, I have flipped the page. Oh, yeah, on there. Sorry, did I skip? Oh, sorry. With your boat, sorry, sorry. Right. Appointment of weight instructors for 22-23. And then under probation, probationary, provisional, and permanent appointments, it's because my highlighted copy missed the word. Probationary appointment of Allison Slater, custodial worker. Probationary appointment Michael Westover, custodial worker. Amy Kim, a probational appointment of Amy Kim as secretary to the superintendent. And appointment of Connor Brown to district clerk. So, let's, can I get a motion on those D, E, and F? D, E, and F. I'm going to struggle. Say moved.
Sorry.
First Amanda, second Tim. Let's open it to discussion and questions on all those. Anybody have a question? Okay, I have a couple. You guys tell me. First, I would just, you have a question?
Are we missing Andrea, hopefully?
Nope. You just picked girl. Andrea Emily.
Oh, and I'm there.
Yeah.
All right. Oh, I see.
I would care first.
Yep.
So, that's why I'm like, if we're.
It's coming, it's coming.
Okay. I guess as a board, thank you. Congratulations, Mike Major. Enjoy your retirement.
Huge congrats.
Enjoy your retirement. You know, it's 12 hours until September 17th.
Technically, technically, you retired last Friday.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, he's already back.
Okay.
We went through this one.
But he's had a lot of years of service in this community and the school, so well deserved and, you know, congratulations to him.
Just kudos to Mike and the institutional knowledge that that man has from families and kids and history is going to be sorely missed, but we'll have months to beat down, so we'll still have them.
And Eric, maybe you could just explain, district clerk is falling under Connor Brown now, so what does that entail for Connor? Because he's still our business.
Yeah, the major responsibilities of the district clerk are running the Board of Education election and budget vote, which Connor has very, has been intimately involved in for the last two years anyway. And with the resignation of Rebecca York, that leaves responsibilities for orphan. And frankly, I think it was, it was an opportunity to streamline district office operations because this is something Connor had run together anyway. So, it alleviated that, it alleviated the need to have a third person involved in that. Some of the other clerical responsibilities, like Board of Education, that's things like that, will still rest with Amy Kim, who's our new Board of Education, Superintendent Assistant. And congrats to Amy.
All right. Any other questions for anybody? Danielle, Gary, you guys have any questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving D, E, and F, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All of those passed. Congratulations. Good luck to everybody on those lists. Item G and H will be together. Item G is a MOA for the teachers association and item H is an MOA for the administrators association. Can I get a motion on those?
So moved.
Second. Tim first, Amanda second on that. Any questions on these? Just for the record, these MOAs are what Eric alluded to in his, his portion, his update about how we move forward with this state ed incentive.
These are all written by Randy Ray, who's one of our school attorneys and labor relations specialists that we subscribe to and services through the Bozies.
Any other questions on these? Okay, all those in favor of G and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those pass. Next, I'm going to group I, J, K, L, M, and N together for approval. I is the varsity girls hockey combination. We do this each year and we are the host school for other schools that can't pull together a team, their girls come to our school.
Danielle, can we do that one simply since I got to prove myself?
Oh, sure. All right, let's do, all right, so let's just do I, girls hockey. The result that the board approves the girls varsity hockey combination for the 22-23 school year. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Amanda, I will second that. Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, is there a thought process? Steve, when, when it's at wild combination, it's just like a hot project, all of them. How are you seeing those folks have to be involved in order for this team to succeed?
I don't know the exact number of girls, but I know we're very conscious that our residents won't suffer for the inclusion of kids from outside the district. There's also a financial obligation that the district has to pay, so it doesn't cost our taxpayer any money.
But I do know the split for this particular.
Yeah, I just, I was just asking a question.
Like at what point do we fall too low if we're three and?
Three, 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 and so on.
When I was on the hockey board, youth hockey board, I know Steve a couple of years ago, and this, we've known this is going to be coming along due to the, just the.
Numbers coming.
The numbers coming through. And this was, this one year where the numbers, they were real funky. With that, that's why I think there's a need for other schools. And then after this, there's a substantial number of people that are waiting to participate here and speaking out with hockey program. Also, adding other students from the schools also supports financially the payment of the program with the fees that the district collects from those other institutions. So, it's a win, win for.
Yeah, I just wonder the logic of it.
I think really a lot of it too has to do with how fortunate we already have community facilities like this. So, it'll, it'll add up that we're still the most. And even if that seesaw tipped in the wrong direction, that might be something we can weather for a year and then let's roll deliberate effort to recruit more girls.
Any other questions on the girls hockey combo team? Danielle, you said you're going to reduce your staff for this.
Yes.
No problem. All right. All those in favor of approving the girls hockey combo team, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes with the four of us, so we are good on that one. All right, so I'll just move ahead with combining the other ones. J is approval of our Bozies transportation contract. K is the tax correction for property listed in our board docs. L is a disposal request. We are going to dispose miscellaneous Lego robotics equipment and donate them to Dr. King Elementary School in Syracuse because we have moved to a vex robotic system. And there's still some life left to those legosystems. M is a donation. We are very grateful for a donation from the Merry Garuda Theater and they have $2,500. And N is all of the financial reports that Connor has attached for us, which is some light reading. Can I get a motion on J through N?
Sure.
All right. Gary first, Tim second. Questions or discussion on any of these items? Just Eric, I guess just for Connor, the Bozies transportation contracts, this is pretty standard?
Yeah.
Okay? Yep, just want to make sure. And in relation to your financial reports, is there anything out of the ordinary that we should be concerned?
No, nothing concerning. The reason you saved two months on there is just because we had to finalize the audit for the goal numbers forward. So, we found the goal numbers forward, we got a finalized audit and that's why we're just.
Okay. All those in favor of passing those items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. J through N passes. Now, onto item O. CSC, CPSC, and 504 reports. The Board of Education arranges for the placement of students with disabilities as recommended by the CBSC, CSC, 504 committee meetings. And in our board docs, we have those reports. Can I get a motion on item O? So, all right, first Amanda, I will second that one. Any questions or discussion on this?
Eric, could you follow up with Jen to see with our pre-K program, how this assisting those students and middle class students with special needs, getting that extra advantage this year? I don't know if we have anybody that falls in that category.
I don't think when we did the lottery, it worked out that way. We still have CPSC kids that are on our, we are at services for that.
I didn't know if anybody made it into our program this year by the look of the drawing, so.
Yeah.
It's run by the county. If it's CPSC, it's not running the school. So, our service providers wouldn't be providing them services regardless of if they have an ID.
If they were here, okay.
They would have to go through the CPSC process, which is through the county.
Okay. Any other questions on these? Okay, all those in favor of approving item O, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We are on to closing items. The first one is process review. The next meeting is November 1st, so we can do agenda setting on October 25th. I'm going to cross out the 27th because most of us are going to be at NISBA. So, is anybody free on the 25th for agenda setting? Either an eight or a four.
I think a four.
I could do it.
Gary or Dan kind of in, can you get that? Gary, you want to say a maybe?
Yeah, that's a possibility, maybe.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll say yes. Obviously, I have to be there, so unless Kerry can do it.
Yeah, we have three of us.
You can only three. It has to be Kerry or I have, are supposed to be one of the three, I think, but if you can do it outside of that, it's fine.
Or you want to do it outside, I can order it there.
Yeah, oh, so yeah, Kerry or I have, one, Kerry or I must be there.
So.
Or I cannot. But if you are free, if you are free, Amanda did the last one, so.
So, we're looking for.
You guys predict, you did the last one, so that way you can rotate in just to give them.
Yeah, we have recently gets closer to it.
It is 23 days away, so a lot changes.
I will assume you are going unless you let me know and then I can tack that in.
I had a proposal to, to start considering moving board meetings up to the high school library and then in December to have the board meeting actually in the auditorium so that we could showcase some of our technology up there.
Oh, because Brian Franco's group is doing a presentation. I have no problem with the location change.
I'm fine with the December one. I'd like to hear more about what we feel the benefits are of meeting in the library because I feel like when we met there previously, it was difficult to hear.
Okay. That really was just an idea to have people on site, an opportunity to showcase some of our other facilities. The board members are not always into buildings. It's an opportunity to come early and, you know, take a look at some of the construction that's happening or things like that.
When you did it in the library, where did you, how, where, where were you going?
We set up tables just.
Right now, I mean, I mean that.
Yeah. There's plenty of room for spectators. It's just, it's just an impressive space.
Beautiful.
We used, at the show, we used the room, the breakout, the lounge room there. It's very beautiful, a lot more meaning inside there. Yeah. Cause I, then it's a sound issue.
I like it here. As far as board meetings are concerned, I am okay with the December deal. But I think, you know, as a, as a board meeting, I think setting here is appropriate and it sort of keeps the right, the right tenor for the job, the purpose that we serve. If we want to see different aspects of the facilities and all that jazz, we can, we can figure it out. But that's just my opinion.
For the December one.
For the December one, that makes perfect sense. I think, like I said before, from a board perspective, I think this is the right, the appropriate, to set it for a two hundred business that we are about.
I mean, I think again, like I know the library is equipped with, you know, screens and stuff, but it's easier done here, I think. The other piece of, yeah, and I, I know I probably sound like a broken wrapper at this point, but.
What, the high school?
Yes. Where you're constantly highlighting our high school and our high school is an amazing and absolutely beautiful space.
We could travel.
I was saying, I would like to have water, that's what I was going to say.
I have no problem.
One of the auditoriums, do that.
I think if we traveled, I would be more willing. I would.
Maybe, I said, yes, maybe some of the talk about.
Yeah, we don't have to decide now, so we can, we all, yeah. Marinate, marinate around this a little bit and then we'll decide.
I like that. Give people an opportunity. Maybe we could get more popular again.
Well, yeah, because you know why? The basketball starts, the basketball starts in the winter. Saw those people going to basketball. Maybe they don't want to drive home for the one hour practice they might commit.
Right.
Right? They're going to basketball.
It was, it was a great opportunity.
Just say.
That might bring in parents or like, hey, I want an opportunity to get in that.
This was kind of, you know, how to start that and connect to all the different spaces for all the different kids. I love that.
All right, well, let's marinate and then we will bring it back up again to discuss. Next item up is any announcements. We do have a board meeting on November 1st and I guess I would just take this opportunity to reiterate Wednesday mornings at 8:30 in the district office. There is a coffee hour with Eric and Connor and it is open to the public, so whether you are a parent or a community member, come on in. The curriculum meetings are going to take place at 5:00 PM on the same days that we have board meetings and the next.
Correct.
The next curriculum meeting will also be on November 1st, 5:00 PM, open to the public. Come on in and hear what's going on. And this just goes back to, if you want accurate information about what's going on in your child's school, you should come to your child's school for that information and the people that are teaching it because I bet you they'll tell you exactly what they're teaching your kids and how those lessons are going and whether it's our reading program or our math program or something else. Going to the source is always the best place for information, not the Google, just the source. So, come on in, doors open. I think we love having people here, so that would be great. We are, at the end, we are second opportunity for public comment. If anybody would like to make a public comment and I'm looking at you. I can read you the whole spiel, I love her, if you would like, but you certainly don't need to say anything.
So, fine.
So, I think it's fair to say then, you guys do not want to make a statement? Okay.